Pledge.
Of one meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Good morning, everybody. Happy New Year. This is the first meeting of 2024 for the Mahoney County Commissioners, and it is Monday, January 8th at 11:04 a.m. Officially call the meeting to order. We certainly want to thank Ralph Macham. I see Ralph has left.
Ralph has left the building.
He has. Think he was a little upset, but that's okay. Besides that, we will move into our meeting at this time. And I will ask if you have any public comments. Three minutes. Name and address? No? Not going to wish us Happy New Year? Okay, with none being said, I will ask for a motion to approve the previous minutes of Board Meeting Number 50 and approval bills for payment.
I do make that motion of approval of the previous minutes of Board Meeting Number 50, Thursday, December 28, 2023, and approval of bills for payment.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Agetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Chafficanty?
Yes. Okay, advertisement for bids, number one, engineers. There he is. Happy New Year, Pat.
Good morning, everybody. Happy New Year. Item number one is the 2023 Road and Bridge Safety Upgrade Program and the 2024 Sales Tax Resurfacing.
Very good. Thank you. Motion?
Motion to approve advertisement for bids, number one.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Agetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Chafficanty?
Yes. Journal entry, number one.
Approval. Approval of journal entry, number one.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Agetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Chafficanty?
Yes. We have travels, letters A and B, and we'll begin with the Commissioners, O and B. Audrey.
Commissioners, this is to attend CCL Association, Ohio GFOA Association, Karma Township Association, dinners, meetings, seminars, conferences, et cetera, within the state of Ohio and PA for the year 2024, estimated at $7,500, and that's for the Commissioner's staff and Commissioners.
Thank you, Audrey. And probate court?
Yes, sir. We're here to ask for a travel to attend to Ohio Supreme Court, Ohio Judicial College Conferences, Probate Judges Association, Bar Association, Ohio State Bar Association, magistrates, National Judicial and Legal Association Meetings, Seminars, and Conferences within the state and other destinations for 2024, estimated at $14,000.
Thank you. What is your name? I apologize.
Dave Kinar.
Hi, Dave. Thanks for coming. And happy news. Okay, motion?
A motion to approve travels, A and B.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Agetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Chafficanty?
Yes. Moving on, agreements. We have letters A through E, and we'll begin with the Engineers' Office. Pat.
Commissioners, letter A is an agreement with Fiteh Freightliner for repairs to vehicle number 59 in the estimated amount of $4,192.66. These are non-general funds.
Thank you, sir. And lead, Phil? Hurry.
Jimmy?
I'll answer it. Commissioners, this is an agreement with American Pinnacle Construction, Inc., for chip home repair at 703 Southern Boulevard, in the amount of $16,825. And this is a non-general fund expenditure.
Thank you, Jim. And C, D, and E, sanitary. Pat.
Commissioners, letter C is an agreement with the safety company, doing business as M-Tech. This is for repairs to our sore jet Vector truck, which is S26, in the estimated amount of $6,722.65. Letter D is an agreement with Greenwood Chevrolet. This is for repairs to pickup truck number S5, in the estimated amount of $12,087.05. And letter E is an agreement with Greenwood Chevrolet for repairs to pickup truck number S29, in the estimated amount of $3,141.81. These are all non-general funds.
Thank you, Pat. Motion?
Motion to approve, number three, agreements, A through E.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Agetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Chafficanty?
Yes. Change orders, A and B. Lead?
Commissioners, item A, this is for change order number one with WNW Construction for lead hazard control, Healthy Homes. Work is at 503 Irene, in the amount of $1,200. It's non-general fund. Item B is change order number one with American Pinnacle Construction, Inc., for lead hazards control, Healthy Homes, work 910 Oneowa, in the amount of $1,475, and it's also a non-general fund expenditure.
Okay, thank you, sir. Motion?
Motion to approve, number four, change orders, A and B.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Agetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Chafficanty?
Yes. Resolutions, number one. Roll call.
Motion to approve resolutions, number one, additions.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Agetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Chafficanty?
Yes. We have resolutions, letters A and B. Letter A, convention and visitors. Linda?
Good morning, everyone, and Happy New Year. Letter A is a support grant resolution to the Ohio Athletic Committee, Ohio Athletic Committee for the 2024 Ohio State Wrestling Championships. They've been coming to our area many, many years, holding their event at the Cavelli Center. And this is a grant in the amount of $8,500, non-general. Just to give you a quick idea, in 2023, their first weekend brought 10,500 people through the doors of the Cavelli Center. And their second weekend, grade school, brought 10,196 participants and spectators. Lots of visitors coming to our areas. Wonderful event.
Very nice. Great turnout. Thank you.
Yes.
And dog ward, Diane? Karen? Okay. No.
Karen?
She want to do that? Or you want me to do it?
Just, I can do it for you. Commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. For the dog ward, it's a resolution approving the appointment of one employee from part-time to full-time as a kennel canvasser.
Thank you, Karen. Commissioners, motion?
Number two resolution, a motion to approve, number two resolutions, A and B.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Agetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Chafficanty?
Yes. Thank you. And for the go-to-the-order, any elected officials, department heads? Care to pump? Or have anything to say? No?
You know what?
Carol?
I'm sorry. I just start talking.
Okay.
You know, and I just want everybody to, I know I do this at the first every year when we start our reorg. As some of you notice, and of course, it's on our site as well, that when you see that we have went through our agenda, I want you all to know that these, this agenda has vetted very well before any one of us vote on this with our office. We have our clerk that presents us with the ITs, which is with our tracking devices on every issue that's on this agenda. So when you see this, don't think we're just saying, okay, we're going to vote on it. We do vet this. We appear to, you know, through our meetings prior to this. So I wanted you to know that I do say that every meeting. And I just want the people to know that that's what we do. We don't just come here and vote. Anyway, can I say something else?
You got before.
Oh, my God, I love this. I'm allowed to talk now. You know, I want, first, first, it's Nancy.
That'll be short-lived.
I just, I just have to thank our former chair, which was Commissioner Ditzler, for all his work throughout the year. It was very much appreciated on my behalf and probably Commissioner Chafficanty's. Last year was a very busy year for us. A lot of you know that. We dealt with a lot of ARP funding. We dealt with the ending of the COVID funding. Economic development packages that we all worked on, that Dave was a part of, TIFs. And just being a part of the three and being the chair, working on the bridge building and the teamwork that we continue to have as Mahoney County Commissioners. As you see, the chair, and Anthony will be doing that this year, the chair is is basically a part of most of the committees, fiscal responsibility, and things in that respect that he will be a part of and bring to the rest of us. And Dave, you did that very well. You're very good with numbers. You make me sick, but that's okay. I, I love it. So I ask him many financial questions, like if I'm not understanding some of the financials, he's very quick. What do you think, Anthony?
He is.
We're working it out on the papers and the computer. He has it in a set. That's a good thing, though. But basically, the relationship that we all have as a team, you don't see that in many counties across the state of Ohio. Mahoney County has great commissioners. Commissioner Ditzler, Commissioner Chafficanty, and myself. But, so we need to look at that as we move forward in 2024. We need to look at what the people of Mahoney County have here and how stable we are financially. And we will probably be getting our bond council come in in the next month or so, giving us an update on all our financials. But I just wanted you to know that between Dave's relationship with both of us, keeping us informed, meetings, if they were held, like if he had a meeting late in the afternoon, there was always a call after that to fill us in on what we thought and that we would bring it to the table, along with Audrey, who keeps us posted. And of course, our staff, which is excellent. Thank you, Nancy and Holly and Megan. Of course, you know, for all the phone calls and the ITs and all of instructions. The disciplinary things that we have. I'm joking, Nancy. But I, I did want to say that. I want to wish everybody Happy New Year, healthy, happy, peaceful. Peaceful. Let's hope this country gets back on track. Just think of it this way. You see what you have here? The relationship we have is good. If we don't agree and we want to fight, we don't come out there and do it. We go in our back room. We work it out so that when we come out here, we have a resolution to whatever's going on in Mahoney County. Our state legislators and our federal people ought to pay attention to what our locals do so that they could get our country back on track. But anyway, I'm done, and I thank you as good luck. We'll be working together this year. Look forward to it. Thank you, David.
Very nice. Mr. Ditzler?
Yeah, wow. No, Carol is right that, but actually, you know, the three of us, you know, one's president, one's vice president, one's commissioner, but that's a formality for, you know, signing the most papers, right?
Oh, yeah.
Whose responsibility is what? But as, but as Carol always talks about us being a team, there's so many meetings and so many organizations and, you know, so many entities between, you know, green team soil and ways, you know, all the different departments that we all equally take things as, you know, you represent the board on this, on this board and, you know, and, and you represent on another and you're the, you're, you're the assistant or second and you're the alternate. And, you know, we, we work very well together to make sure that everybody takes responsibility and comes back and keeps everyone else updated. So we do that equally as we have a good working relationship and, you know, it's very important when you have a board of three because, you know, you're, you're not always on the same page with your, your beliefs and your responsibilities and your, and your abilities. But you're always on the same page in the end result to make sure we're doing the best job we can on behalf of the residents of Mahoney County. And, you know, we couldn't do it without, you know, the people that work in our office and work in all the other departments, you know, Audrey and everyone here. So it's important to do that, to make sure that, you know, we don't become dysfunctional. Because when, you know, you just have to look to the north, I think, to see a lot of dysfunction. And when that happens, you know, nothing really gets accomplished because you're always putting out fires and trying to make sure you're, you're, you know, keeping on touch. And I, I always used to say that it's, it's funny because, you know, what, if we had a question, we'd say, well, what's Trumbull or Columbian or something doing? Anthony will say, well, I'll call Michaelic or Carol Will and, you know, we'll all call this guy or somebody, you know, and we just find out from another board and what they do, you know. But if Trumbull ever had a question, all three would call all three of us because nobody believed the other one. You know, so, you know, it was, it was always, you know, kind of unusual on how it went in the past, but it's the nature of the beast, you know. Unfortunately, we don't, we don't have that beast in Mahoney County, so it's, it's good. But, you know, a lot of good things going on. It's unfortunate that, you know, we're actually coming back to, you know, to to ground zero with respect to putting out all the ARPA funds and the COVID funds and things of, of was mentioned earlier. So, and it's a good thing that, you know, we do have a very conservative approach with respect to spending. And as Ralph showed earlier, on the payrolls going down over the last three years, so it showed that, you know, we've done a good job being very prudent with the taxpayers' dollars so that with respect coming into a new year, when you don't have the federal government handing you $40 million to be able to help local communities, people, and businesses. And one of the things Ralph said that is a travesty to county government, local government, is the state legislature only passed 12 bills in the entire calendar year and the least amounts since 1964, and they failed to do anything on the homestead exemption to make sure that the people in Mahoney County that are retired and elderly and fit the mold of the homestead exemption, got their taxes increased, and they did not get the homestead exemption to be moving in sync with the increase in the taxes. So remember that, that when you're, when you're renewing your state legislators to, to come in on why they chose not to do anything on behalf of the taxpayers of Mahoney County. So it's something that always bothers me that when people go down to Columbus or go to Washington, they put the rose-colored glasses on. They have a good time. They see everything, you know, is, is all rosy with respect to the state's budget. They come back home. We don't know what they've done. We don't know what bills they've passed. We don't know what they're working on. We get no feedback. And subsequently, nothing happened on behalf of the residents of Mahoney County. You know, because I ask them, I always want to know, what are you working on? And how does it positively impact the residents that we represent? And we don't usually get an answer. We don't usually get a positive answer. So just food for thought. I will, you know, echo Carol on the Happy New Year. My, we had our Christmas dinner over the weekend. I will say that my wife had COVID during the week of Christmas and New Year's. And so my niece that comes in from out of town and, you know, we always celebrate with my aunts and my wife's aunts and, and have, have dinner at our house. And, you know, the flights were canceled. The dinner was canceled. Everything was canceled. But so we chose Saturday to have dinner and my, my wife's family is Polish and Slovak and, you know, it's, you know, and I always tell her, well, when I was growing up, they just said we're hunkies, right? You know, and, and, you know, it's, so it's, you know, but, but it's all good because they have the best food. And so we have our, our typical ethnic hunky food dinner and, and we always have to have the fish and babalki or babalki. What's it called?
I can't.
And babalki, you know, it's, it's these funky little squares of dough that we make. No, it's dough, and you put honey and poppy seeds.
Oh, my God. No, those are called.
That's Greek.
Anyway, that's what it's called in, in there. And, and, and I wish I could, I, I taped it, you know, I taped it. I wish I could show it, but my wife and her sister would go. They always, they always sing the Slovak national anthem, you know. Oh, gosh.
Come on.
You know, no, I can't, I can't do it. And, and they, they only, they only sing it to show that they still can. You know, because they grew up doing that, you know. And, and I think it was something in school that they all, that, that they did. Because they're, they want the holy name and, you know, then St. Christine's and Ursuline and, you know, so. But, but it was very nice. We got to have our Christmas dinner and, and I love fish, you know. We had, had the, we had baked tattik and pierogies and. And they have a thing where they throw peas. It's supposed to be good luck for the new year. So the oldest, the matriarch or the family throws peas. And so, you know, the, everybody gets hit with a pea and the dog gets to eat everything off the floor. So it's, it's, it's always, it's always good. And the bad thing, though, is they have a sour soup that you have to cook. Well, in the past, we cooked it outside because it's made with vinegar and it, and it's, it's really, and I forget the, what it, what it, what it is, it's, you have the soup first and then to, to show the bitterness of what life can bring, you know, and then you go through the, the different foods and stuff. So it's, but when, when, I, I was cooking the soup, so you, you got to put your own vinegar in your own bowl. It wasn't made in the soup, so. Anyway, but the bad thing is, is have mushrooms in the soup. And I, because my colleagues know I'm not a mushroom fan. But anyway, everything's good. We thank everybody for the great job they did last year. And we look forward to working well together in the future and doing what we can through 2024 to make sure that we keep the ship steering in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Want some of that sour soup?
Well, you know what? And, and I, I hope I didn't minimize the fact that my colleagues do an amazing job. Anthony, Carol, Audrey is like one of the, the, we used to say, the fourth trustee when I was in Austintown. She's like the fourth commissioner, you know, and adds value equally, you know. So just thank everybody for the great job you guys did and, and I'm proud to be represented by, by the two of you from Mahoney County. And I hope the people see that and understand it and, you know, know that what a great job the two of you do on our behalf, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, I mean, there's not much more to say, you know. I, I want to, of course, congratulate Dave. Did a wonderful yeoman's work as chairman of our board. Dave is very good at numbers and, of course, he always puts us in laughter. So it's always been a pleasure to work with Dave and Carol. As Carol had said, you know, there's three of us here. And if you do not get along, you know, the process of the county, the business center of the county has to function. And if it doesn't, it only hurts the taxpayers. It hurts herself. So we're very blessed to have three of us here who get along. We all live in this community. We're all stakeholders, as such, you are. So we strive to do that every single day. And over the years, I've been here the longest, okay? We have amassed a great staff. Staff that has knowledge, are educated, people-friendly, you know, that's a big thing with me is, you know, I always base a person or a politician on how they treat the public. You know, I've always said, be nice to a person because you don't know if that individual's having a bad day. So they may come to our office to ask for help with their hands out, begging for something. So it doesn't hurt to be nice, and that's what I've always tried to do through my career in politics, is always to treat the taxpayer or the person as a problem and try to help them. And, and our office has done that. We do so much constituent service outside of our agenda, helping people with their food stamps, with Medicaid. You know, social security, the issues are massive. People do have a lot of problems. And sometimes it's difficult to get ahold of your state official or, or your congressman, which, you know, I worked in Congress for 11 years, and one of the things that we did, we focused strongly on constituent service. So I brought that aspect from my past into the Commissioners' Office, but a lot of them won't even return a phone call. So we're local. We're all local here. Everybody sees us in grocery stores and events. People will come up and they'll ask for help. So we, we have a wonderful staff, ladies and gentlemen, that do that, and I'm not afraid to brag about that. If you look in the past, if you look at all these agendas that we have here, these are the county commissioners' work product. And if you would take a look at how many millions and millions of dollars that flowed through this county to some very important programs, schools, grants, okay, all of our safety services, the criminal justice system, it's an immense operation. And it takes coordination. And one of the things I think all three of us can say, we have a great working relationship with every office holder in the county. They have an issue, they come meet with us. You know, we're always accessible. So that's something that I'm going to carry into this new year as we have in the past. And also, I'll be talking to the Commissioners. I would like to maybe go out and have some town hall meetings and hear from our residents in the evening. They show up fine if they don't, just to hear what the pulse is of the community. I think that's very important. You know, if you listen to CNN, you listen to MSNBC, you listen to Fox, you know, that's the pulse of a bigger scale. But I do believe that it's good to hear from our local residents, and hopefully we'll get some dates. We can go out to the communities and take our board meetings out to different parts of the county. That's something that I enjoyed in my early years as Commissioners, to show and make them feel, you know, that they're somehow part of what we're doing here. Carol and Dave both mentioned about the ARPA money. You know, that ARPA money wasn't easy. Every, oh, you've got 47 million dollars. What are you going to, well, yeah, what are you going to do with it? There was certain restrictions and regulations, and Audrey can tell you. And she had it down to a T as to how those funds could be expended. And what the three of us did, we sat down together and we said, look, we have to make sure that the most vulnerable part of our community of Mahoney County gets help. And I'm telling you, we struggled every single day, every week, every month, every year to make sure that we gave the best bang for our buck to the community that was in most, most need. Help retain businesses, rental, okay, mortgage assistance, I mean, healthcare, you name it. I'm not even going to get into the pandemic dollars that, that, that we had to deal with. But on the other aspect with respect to property taxes, you know, I can't believe after all these years, you know, you talk about the homestead exemption, you're talking small percentages. I think the legislator years ago should have been looking at how they could roll back what it costs, what taxpayers are paying. I totally believe that if you are 70 years old and you own your house, you shouldn't have to pay one penny in property taxes. You've worked your whole life. That house belongs to you. You're paying the insurance. You're paying for your lawn care and you're paying to maintain it. But when you read 70 years old, unfortunately, you probably have a history of health issues, correct? Diabetes, stroke, heart. You think somebody wants to worry about having to pay their property taxes when in that age? And I think the federal government should let us keep what we earn. I would love to see the nation go to a flat tax, along with standardized deductions. I think we should be allowed to keep what we earn. It would be a beautiful thing. So when you hear the Commissioners talk about why we had to put a justice tax on, why we have a sales tax, you know, that's probably the most fairest way of taxation. Some people don't like it. We don't want to do it. But it is keeping your county government intact. You know, charity begins at home. So without those tools, we do not have a sheriff's department. We don't have the courts. We don't have E911. We don't have Hazmat. You don't have title transfers with the Recorder's Office, the trust. So those fundings are mandated by the state that we have to do. And Audrey can tell you, if you look at our budget, we've been very conservative with the dollars. Everything that we've had audited has always come through with flying colors. Even our bond rating has increased exponentially over the last five to 10 years, and we have lost, as Dave, Dave, there's a great demonstration of how much money we've lost from the state of Ohio that they have taken out of local government money. It's sick. So if they can't resolve a simple issue on property taxes and reevaluations every six years, 40% increase to every household in this community, they have failed. My, my opinion. So with that being said, I want to thank my colleagues, Carol and My, my opinion. So with that being said, I want to thank my colleagues, Carol and Dave, Audrey, and all of our staff here. Jimmy does a great job. I tell you what, here's one guy that keeps us out of trouble, is Jim Fortunato. He knows that ORC front and back, and he can recite it verse and chapter, just like the Bible. So Jim, we appreciate all of your years of service. You've been here a long time. When I have a problem, I go to him. If he says it's okay, I feel comfortable doing it. Thank you. Nancy?
You too.
Nancy's been a clerk here for so long, she doesn't bother nobody.
Forty-five years, right?
Fifty years.
Oh, my gosh.
And she don't ask for nothing. So Happy New Year to everybody, wishing the county, you know, with God's help. We need God's guidance. Don't forget the Lord. He's brought me to where I'm at. And that we have a great year. Wish everybody good health. That's most important. And some happiness and peace. That being said, Dave's won our next meeting.
This Thursday.
This Thursday. This, okay, we're back.
We're back this Thursday.
January eleventh, ten o'clock.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remidi Agadi?
Yes.
Commissioner Chafficanti?
Yes, thank you.